Five, one. We'll get, begin by the. Begin by the, uh, playing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first act tonight will be, uh, roll call of the presence. Mr. Serta.
Here.
And Ms. Douglas.
Here.
And Mr. Glovier.
Here.
Ms. Cruz Perez.
Here.
And Ms. Bia Gomez.
Here.
Daryl Oden is here and Mrs. Moody is not present tonight. And next thing on the agenda is going to be public comments on the agenda items. So, Serta will take a look to see if we have anyone skipped.
None on agenda items, but we do have some on non-agenda items.
Okay, so we have no speakers for the, uh, agenda items, but we do have some speakers for non-agenda items. So, I will call you up and the first one would be Ms. Monique Smith.
We're doing time?
Uh, yes, we're gonna do that. So, Ms. Smith, come on up. Just as a reminder, the board members are not allowed to respond to you, okay? So, you'll have five minutes and when you get to four minutes, Mr. Serta will say one minute. If you go that long, then you know you have one minute left.
Little thank you all for letting me speak. Um, I am coming to address a concern that I have with, um, the high school and/or an investigation or not an investigation. Um, on October sixth, there was a student who was suspended, who should not have been allowed to enter a football game. He was allowed to enter that football game. Um, not only that, but he had a gun on him. Uh, parents were able to witness the fact that he had a gun on him. Uh, the following school day, which would have been that Tuesday because of President's Day following on the tenth, a series of adults, parents, um, including one of the parents that witnessed the student with this firearm, came to the high school to make the high school aware. Um, and we were told that we should pull our students from school. The kids that did not have weapons, the kids that were our honor students, student athletes, not sure why that was the resolution, but we were told to pull our kids from stu- from school that day. And so, I took that as the school wasn't able to protect my child and to make sure that he would be remaining safe as a parent that was bringing this to their attention. So, I did take my son from school that day. Um, in addition to that, we were told that we would not, they would not be notifying parents that this happened, nor would we know any information about any sort of investigation taking place. Um, I did follow up by contacting the superintendent's office. I spoke with the assistant. Um, I gave her, uh, detailed information. She did say that there was another parent that had called and made them aware, um, and that they were going to, uh, let the superintendent know and follow up. Um, I was told I would get a phone call back the following day, which would have been the twelfth. Um, I've yet to receive that phone call back to know what is happening. I do know for a fact that the student is still in school. Um, the handbook does state that a weapon on school grounds or anywhere within three hundred feet of school grounds calls for immediate expulsion. So, it is my concern feeling that the district is not taking the fact that a firearm was on school grounds seriously. Um, in addition to that, the day that the students were, that the, the school was made aware, um, in addition to bringing down those students, they also allowed those students to come down while there were students and parents there making them aware. So, now these students know the students who brought this to the school's attention and threats of being, are being made against them, which is again, a concern of mine. Um, I have made multiple calls and left messages with both Mr. Kago and the superintendent, um, dating with, from as early as the eleventh all the way up until last Friday, and I still have not received a phone call back. Um, so I just came today to make the entire board aware of my concerns with that. Um, I think all parents want their students and children to feel safe and we definitely trust the school to do that and knowing that our concerns are not being taken seriously or not being followed up on definitely make me feel that my student may not be the safest at Kennedale as I thought he was. Um, in addition to that, there's been a new attendance or t- uh, tardy policy that from, what we were told from the attendance clerk was implemented by Mr. Kago himself. It's not in the attendance policy, it's not on the tardy policy. I looked at it. Um, I've looked daily to check for updates. As of today, it's still not there. Um, but students that are tardy are no longer allowed to go to class. They are sent to the library for their entire period and they're marked absent, which in my opinion hurts them more than allowing them to go to class late. They're also not allowed to make up any in-class work that, or that's being done that day if it's not provided to them on Google Classroom. Um, I'm not sure why we, why he feels that that is a very smart policy or smart rule or idea. Um, the attendance clerk and several teachers that we've spoken to do not agree with this policy, but said that they did not have a say and he's not willing to change his mind on that. Um, just not sure if anybody else was made aware of that. So, that was my intention of coming here today to make the board aware of these issues or concerns that I have as a parent. Um, and that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate all those comments. Okay. So, the next person who has, uh, signed up is Ms. Tammy Lovings. And Ms. Lovings, again, just wanted to let you know that the board members are not allowed to respond, uh, and you have five minutes. If you get to four minutes, mark if you get that long. And Mr. Serta will let you know you have one minute.
All right. My name is Tammy Lovings. Uh, I have a son who's a sophomore here. Uh, my son also is involved with, um, Ms. Smith's son as far as one of the kids who were, uh, given the opportunity to leave for that day. And so, my concerns are pretty much the same as hers as far as that's go- is concerned. Um, I haven't had a lot of dealings with the principal and vice-principal here at Kennedale, which I'm grateful. So, uh, but the, um, this situation has really put me in a bad frame of mind. I know that I did bring my son lunch one day and I happened to seen, um, Dr. Robinson. And, uh, I just wanted to bring up something to him that I was made aware of as a parent and that was that there was a lot of smoking in the, uh, in the, the restrooms where the kids, including my own, chooses not to use those restrooms. They wait until they go to gym or go to the gym and use the restrooms. I think that's very unfortunate. Uh, and I brought it up to Dr. Robinson one day just out of the blue. Uh, he was standing in the, in the foyer before I left out and I brought it to his attention and I was like, hey, are you guys aware that there's a lot of smoking going on in the restrooms? And he's like, oh, yeah, we got it under control. Uh, yeah, we're aware of that. I said, well, I said, is there, um, is there a problem? Maybe a teacher could stand in there during passing period, uh, just to make sure that they're going in there to use the restroom and come out and not fighting because there's a lot of fights that's happening in there too. And there's no smoking, rather be vaping or what have you. Oh, no, they don't want us in there. Uh, they don't, they don't want you, want me in there. So, but yeah, we got it under control. We, it's just real dismissive. Uh, it was business as usual. I'm tired talking about it lately. That's the attitude. I never was asked my name. I never was asked for a phone number to follow up. I never was asked for an email. Maybe you can send me an email, maybe we can talk about it, maybe we can talk about some resolve. There was nothing, nah, we got it under control. We know it's an issue. I posted on the Kennedale Moms and there were a couple of comments where they were saying, oh, yeah, I went in there in passing period and I got a contact. Oh, yeah, I've heard about that. So, obviously, it's a known issue. And this was, this was last year. And my son, of course, was a freshman at that time. Obviously, it's a known issue, but I'm like, why is it not an issue? I think that it is because even though maybe no one has passed out from fentanyl, thank God, and hopefully it never happens, but why not be preactive instead of proactive? Why not get that taken care of? Spending five minutes in a passing period for, uh, to ensure that kids are going in there to use restroom and leave was five minutes. You have to spend, you got five teachers, six teachers standing in the hallway at their doors during passing period. Is it just absurd to think that one can go stand near or by the restroom? So, if something is going on in there, you can smell marijuana, you can even smell vape. You know what I mean? No, uh, my kid is choosing not to go there, but I don't think that that's right. I don't think that's what school is for. And I think that if they're aware of it, something needs to be done other than, oh, yeah, we're aware of it. That's not good enough for me. So, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Uh, and I piggyback off of what Ms. Smith said. I am concerned about that and concerned about the fact that the follow-up, uh, actually letting us know what's going on and as well as just real quickly, the vice president, I'm not sure her name, uh, forgive me, uh, but, uh, I did speak with her one day that I came up here to grab my son and, uh, there was a fight that happened previously. One of the guys brought my son's name up and so, my husband and I immediately came to the school and I, I was speaking with her about it. She did bring us back to her room. She spoke with us about it and she said, oh, the, the guy had been, uh, di- you know, discharged, sent home. And I was like, okay, great. I'm thinking, good, his parents are involved. So, did his parents come up here and get him? And she said, yeah, his parent came up here and got him. I said, oh, okay. So, soon as I got home, the lady whose son had the fight told me, no, girl, his mom did not come and get him. Me and my son was walking out to the car after she came and got him after the fight. That boy ran out of the office to fight her son, fussing and cussing, trying to fight him right there in front of her and then one of the security guards had to come in and retrieve him. So, that was a total lie. Of course, that doesn't put me in a right, good frame of mind when it comes to the people who are taking care of my child. I can't even be honest with me. Thank you.
And Ms. Lovings, thank you very much for your comments as well. So, thank both of our speakers for your passionate communication. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll now move to section number five, which is the special district recognition. And that, so, Mr. G.
All right, so, as principals, appreciation marks. So, we will pass on a few items to our principals. Don't forget even coming up. Mr. David, we've all given a nice, super duper day without here, but we love the, uh, appreciation of his efforts. Mrs. Wells.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm perfect. Thank you. Well, I think we're gonna take your turn first.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Just stand. Just butt.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Bruce.
Bruce.
Oh, that's fun. Thank you.
And.
The best.
Oh. No shame in that.
Humble bumble.
Are we invited? Okay. Appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Kago. Thank you, guys. That was awesome. All right, I appreciate it. I'm actually glad, Bob.
Oh, that's nothing to go first. I didn't do the special ones.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're perfect. You're perfect. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. You're welcome, Jim.
All right. All right, let me do this.
All right, you can get one of the principals to tell them what you pay us for.
This is about a kid in my football field.
Okay. Okay.
And mom has six years. Well, this is separate. Six years.
Okay, we'll now go through section five, B. Introduction to Ms. West, new assistant superintendent of finance and operations.
You opened those last one.
Somehow I got them wrong.
Guess they put them right, right, right next to each other.
Now, how did that work? Okay, let's try this again.
You're on Paul words.
Phil, while we're waiting, I would like, once again, can we give our, all of our principals another big round of applause? I know, uh, your, your efforts do not go unnoticed, so we appreciate you and thank you for all you do, your dedication to the district and our students.
Absolutely. And now, we go to section five, which is the Paul Awards.
All right, so now, we go into, uh, the Paul Awards for October twenty-third at the high school. Uh, at Kennedale High School, Allison Boobel, uh, Andrew Cupka, Ariselli, Monica, which has three awards, Ashley Alasthat, Brittany Nun, Carol George, Chorito Augusto, Cole Ward, Dr. Chelsea Allison has two awards, Emily Clenden- Clendenin, excuse me, Jennifer Andrews Cox, John Bowles, Joseph Lucero has two, Julian Beard, Kaylee Bond has two, Catherine McBroom, Carrie Allen, Christie Hullett has three, Kim Paget has two, Kristen Dunn, Marcus Parks, Marissa Church, Matt Casey, Matthew Munson has four, Melissa Springsfield has four, Michael Agnello, uh, Michelle Petrie has two, Monica Stevens, Phil Oakley, Philip Irby, Rachel Brooks, Sarah Humphrey, Sarah Kruger has two, Shelley Fajewski has three, Tammy Brugier, Tracy Haddaway, Wendy Hale has two, Wendy Thacker has two, and Zachary Tate. It's a lot too at the high school, so, uh, congratulations to all of those people. At Arthur, uh, Early Childhood Center, we have Emily Stevenson, Laura Wells, Maggie Enlow, Sarah Blocklin, and Van Tran. At Delaney, Brady, Brandy Sander, Sandberg, excuse me, Kathy Nevens, Kelsey Matthews, Kim Knotts, Manny Medina, Marcy Harris, Mariella Trochi, and, uh, Michelle Reed, Natalie Ayton, Stephanie Stevens, and Tricia Porez two. At Kennedale Junior High School, Chris Hartsfield, Angela Bruce, Caitlin Grant, Cecilia Chavez, Charity Simmons, Crystal Aplon, Jamie Strickland, Katie Greenwood, Wood, Christie Porter, Lindsay Hammond, Michaela Shrum, Sonya Miller, Jessica Gilbert has three. At Patterson Elementary, April Wenders, Michael Kwan, Michelle Reagan, and Mrs. French. At Central Administration, Tammy Duomo, Dr. Julie Boo, Tracy Williams, and Danell Dickey. So, let's give all of them a great round of applause. And, uh, thank you all for your efforts. Remember, these, these awards are peer-recognized and so that really is pretty special when you're recognized by your peers.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. G. Uh, we'll next move to section six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under this subheading will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda by trustee for the section. And I've heard nothing from any trustee that wants to remove anything from the agenda. Therefore, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Douglas and second by, you know, uh.
Gotcha.
Mr. Glovier.
I'm back.
All on paper, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we'll now move to section, uh, seven, which begins by information-only section. Uh, seven A, bilingual and ESL annual program evaluation.
Can you do that presentation, Ms. Bowden?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am bringing you, um, the annual evaluation for the bilingual and ESL program. It is a report that you've had in your board book, so I won't read all the pages, but I will just kind of step through the sections, um, highlight a couple of things, and then take any questions that you may have. So, the first section is our student profile. Um, and we haven't had a significant change in how many languages we're serving, um, since last year. So, we have twenty-two right now and we have really consistently been, seventy percent of those, uh, students are Spanish-speaking. That's been about six years from the last data that I've looked at. As far as, um, the number of emergent bilingual learners, we are overall seeing an increase. Um, last year, you can see on the chart, we had three hundred fifty-four, which was up from three hundred forty-two the year before. And, uh, right now, we're actually over four hundred for this year. And so, our, our percentages have been trending nine point eight, eleven point two, and, uh, this year so far, we have fourteen percent. So, it appears we're continuing to steadily increase. The next section, um, talks about our program content and design and we have three program models. We have our, uh, early exit bilingual, which takes place at Arthur and JFD. And those are our students that are learning in both languages. Uh, they're building all their skills in both Spanish and English. And then we have our ESL, which is support in an English classroom. And that goes all the way up through grade twelve with our, our two types, COAT and, um, content-based, depending on the grade. The next section is English proficiency and reclassification. That chart shows you how many students, the goal of course is to exit from the program. And so, the, that shows you how many students, uh, this year and last year were exited from the program. And then the next section is our English proficiency, oh, excuse me, that was English proficiency and reclassification, that are, that was our exit. And then our student performance data. This is our TELPOS summary data and the, the state, if you remember, reports it in those grade bands, K two and three twelve. And so, you can see the beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. Those are the composite scores. So, every student gets a score in all four domains and then they get an overall score. And so, that's the overall score. We had a little bit of a decrease in those upper levels. There were some changes this year. Uh, I think we've mentioned this before, but in grade two and up, the writing used to be holistically graded, so it was graded by teachers who taught, like, who were taught how to calibrate. And so, um, this past year, it was online and it was scored differently and, and it made a very big difference. We actually dropped in writing in the three twelve band twenty-five points in the state twenty-six. So, that was a big change and because that test was so new with a different type of grading, that next chart where they're showing progress, how many proficiency levels a student went up, they did not record that this year. They didn't report that this year and it won't be part of accountability. We'll go back to that next year once the students have had a second year of taking that online test. Uh, the next section is our staffing and training. And so, it tells you how many teachers, the, the district does a great job on ensuring every possible teacher is certified. Of course, we follow the law and make sure that students are only with teachers that are certified for that, that program, that grade band. But we, we have almost all our teachers certified and we, we provide expectations at the beginning with our contract for the spring. Then you can see in the training chart, um, that chart shows the minimum trainings that are, were provided to appropriate staff last year. Uh, some of them were required at state, some of them were just district trainings, um, on the campus or at the district level. And then s- some of them were online courses, the regional level. There were additional opportunities as well for teachers that were interested in doing more. And then the most important part is recommendations and these are re- the recommendations from last year to this year. So, since we're at the end of October, a lot of things are in place. But basically, um, we are looking for improvement in two categories and that would be building capacity in instruction and leadership and expanding our resources for students and families. And, uh, you can look at those bullet points. But, um, a couple of the highlights, we had a really strong, uh, in that first one, we really wanted to pro- provide very high-quality professional development and so, we wanted to start off really strong this year. And so, our beginning of the year training during welcome back week was, it was much more intensive. So, we had region eleven come out for three hours and, and do content-based language instruction. And they went to each campus. So, we intentionally had those trainings on the campus so that the, the team was a campus team. It, it gave some consistency across the campuses, but it also allowed them to be learning in their own level, to ask questions that were appropriate and for the trainings to be tailored for high school versus elementary. And so, they came out and did that. Um, and then additionally, Dr. Keys and I, instead of doing a turnaround training for assessment, we went out to every campus and did the same thing when it came to assessment. We made sure that the teachers knew how to use the data tools, that they were experienced in TELPOS and other testing that we did and that they understood what the progress monitoring looked like throughout the year and, and ask questions. So, we tried to start our year very, very strong. So, that was a, a great success. And then we continue throughout the year to do training at our monthly meetings and we've also this year added teacher leaders to come with the administrators each month so that they can go back and really support on the campus with their peers. And so far, that's, that's been great. We also added a badge program, uh, specific to, uh, the standards required for English language, uh, acquisition so that we can encourage some teachers who want to be teacher leaders to take a series of courses and have a badge that says that they are very strong in that area and it's an area of interest. So, we're, we're just getting started on that. We'll see how that goes. And then the other area is the resources. Um, we, oh, this is super exciting. Starting this past Monday, we've had our second English, uh, emergent bilingual paraprofessional. And so, we are, she's in training right now, but hopefully she'll be in the classrooms next week. And so, we've really created a, a great schedule that will span both elementary and secondary and get in all of those classrooms and pull all those student groups. And so, that was a, a big addition this year. And then we had that great success at the secondary that we, uh, attribute a lot to the program that we piloted last year, which was summer K twelve. And so, we brought that down to the second grade and above for students who, who need that, um, intensive language instruction based on their proficiency levels on TELPOS. And so, that will also be at the elementary school. And I know that a lot of the teachers were very excited about it. We've, we've heard wonderful feedback already on that and it's only been, you know, a couple of months. So, those are some highlights. Do you have questions?
Do we expect the TELPOS test to stay the same with the writing portion or are they gonna make it so it's doable?
Um, I'm sure I can't answer that in fact.
Like, we heard anything, yeah.
Everything has been going online, so I would, I would assume that that would be the direction that they're going. We haven't heard otherwise, I would say.
Yeah.
And it's more consistent grading and so, they'll, they'll have.
Just, just doesn't accommodate for certain students. Yeah. So, there, if there's certain accommodations, those students are not going to be able to get them because of the way of the nature of the test.
And I'm sure we'll be learning more about that this year, so. But I don't have any new information on that.
Yeah, I know that's not a necessity. It's okay.
Great question.
So, I'm a big fan of positive reinforcement. I like the idea of the badge program, earning badges.
Yeah, I do too.
How many, uh, about how many teachers have earned badges so far?
I was just thinking you'd ask me that question and I don't have the answer, but I can get it. I will need to, uh, go into our, our PD system, I see.
I think it'd be good to know because it, it would give you an indication of how impactful that has been.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that's encouraging them and they're picking up on that and they're.
Yeah, I, I think we need to celebrate that and I'll, I will get that information. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Any other question? All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That takes care of section seven. We now come to section eight for business items that are requiring action.
That's last.
So, eight A discussing, consider approval of the additional authorized revenue for Kennedale High School.
Well, Mr. Adams.
Well, Mr. Adams, do you want to present this, because both of y'all come down? Mr. Balls, Mrs. West, who, and Mr. Adams?
Oh, what we're trying to do here is to not necessarily take me off right now, but to have Ms. West as one of our authorized representatives for all of our investment.
Any questions on that?
I think that's pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Jacqueline West, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations as an authorized representative for Kennedale ISD for First Public Loan Star Investment Pool, Tech Pool, and Tech Star/Logic as presented.
Motion by Mr. Glovier.
Second.
And second by Ms. Douglas. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, that passes unanimously. So eight B, discuss and consider approval of the policy of CW Local.
This is the policy on renaming facilities. It's come back from the TASB, it's ready to be approved. I think we discussed this at the last meeting, so this is the meeting where you take action on it.
Oh, well, I move to adopt policy CW Local as presented.
I'll second.
So that is a motion by Mr. Glovier and second by Ms. Cruz Perez.
So I've been ready for this since June.
All in favor of the motion, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion to pass our policy for renaming has been passed. Okay, and eight C, discuss and consider renaming Kennedale High School Performing Arts Center.
So I do just want to clarify a question that I have. Because I, obviously, I've been part of the other discussions about renaming, and I think what some of the suggestions have been brought to us that were sort of unsolicited, that kind of started the whole conversation. But when I'm reading policy, it looks like the superintendent may bring a recommendation to the board for its approval, or when directed by the board, the superintendent shall solicit naming recommendations from staff, students, and the community. And then we will appoint a naming committee that is representative of employees and community members to gather submissions. If the committee is appointed, the committee shall submit recommended names to the board within a specific timeframe, and then we will vote on and pick one of those names. So my question is, I guess, now that we have the policy, which I like, I'm glad we have the policy, and I do want to move forward with renaming, but can we just do it at this juncture? Or do we need to follow what the policy says and sort of solicit?
Well, according to what the policy says, superintendent can bring that motion anytime.
Make a recommendation, but...
You can make a recommendation, and it's up to the board to vote on.
Okay.
And I've already brought those recommendations to you on numerous occasions. We had the Paris that came and spoke on behalf of Mr. Okti numerous times. We have the petition that I brought, that showed, actually, you had...
And I believe that's the reason that brought us to being able to establish a policy.
Policy to start.
Because we were moving into this direction.
We've actually checked all the boxes we need to check for this specific, for eight C.
I don't know, when I read it, like I said, I'm not trying to be contentious, but is it saying that the superintendent may bring a recommendation that we rename? And then if the superintendent brings a recommendation that we rename, then we solicit names from the community, and they're presented with like this name, this name, or this name?
Superintendent's recommendation should be sufficient, I believe is what.
Well, the way I understand it, the way it was read, is that that's exactly right, that the superintendent can bring a motion to rename. But of course, the superintendent cannot rename, that is up to the board, it's up to the board.
Okay, so if he brings the recommendation for us to rename, that's fine. Then it looks like in order to get the names that we're deciding amongst, it should come from the community members, not us having a discussion of what do we want to name it as? But what the community members have said, here's what we're bringing forth, you know, name A, name B, name C.
Well, I think this is why it all started, because it was brought to us to name it after Mr. Okti.
And it's if...
The entire conversation, so that's, those things have already been done.
Yeah.
That...
And the names were brought too, I think, when individuals came to speak.
So I think they brought, like, we want to name it after Mr. Okti, but is it the E. Okti Center, Earl Okti Center? I don't know that names have actually been presented to us like that, for us to then...
I mean, he signs his emails, Errol K. Okti, and as I recall, the K stands for Kennedale. That's what Mr. Cagle said during the...
Commencement.
Commencement speech back in May, and so I, I don't know, I think we just put Errol K. Okti Performing Arts Center on there and call it a day.
So Maria, to answer your question.
Yes.
So when I wrote...
Yes, because you wrote it, yes.
So I wrote it in a way to where if the superintendent, when it says superintendent may bring a recommendation to the board for its approval, or, so that's this other option. The second part is if, like, he doesn't bring it to the board, because he doesn't know about Mr. Okti, we can come and say, hey, we want to...
Point of order.
We want to name this new building, then you can go out to the committee. And then from that point forward, that's when you can appoint a committee and then use the categories below to make that name recommendation. So it's either, I want to name it this thing, what do you guys think?
Mr. President, could I make a point of order? We've already approved a policy, so I think it's kind of a mute point to discuss whether we are going to do it this way, or this way, or the other, because we've already approved a policy, and it's already been literally approved by all of us unanimously.
I understand, Ms. Perez. However, I will say that I thought that Mrs. Serta's information was...
Oh, no, I understand, no, I definitely appreciate his information as pretty much explaining of...
So I think it's good to go into that.
The comments in here.
So, I mean, so really, it comes down to either superintendent comes up with a suggestion of naming it whatever he suggested, and we approve it, or the board, as the other option, can ask superintendent and say, hey, we want to rename a certain building. Please, you know, create a committee, go out and do that.
Okay.
And then the categories are to determine...
Right, so what you're saying is that was, it's an either or?
It's either or.
And that's the way you wrote it?
It says maybe.
That's the way it's, it's read.
All right.
That's the way it's written, or, comma.
So I think we have clarification on that now.
Right.
It's an either or.
So I appreciate your patience in allowing him to clarify for me, because I wasn't clear.
Okay.
Now that I am clear, thank you.
Awesome, all right. So now we go to eight C, which is discussing, consider the renaming of Kennedale High School Performing Arts Center. And we have a couple people who want to say something, Ms. Viegómez.
Well, considering when Mr. Errol K. Okti, K for Kennedale, when he retired, when he announced his retirement, and the droves of people came out to start sharing their support with him, not only is it rare for someone to stay in education for two decades, especially in today's day and age, but to also pour so much of his no-longer-free time, pour so much of his life into a program and really make it flourish, flourish as much as he did. I think that just is so wonderful, and the fact that we had multiple parents, band parents come and speak to us and outside of meetings, send us emails and approach us in anywhere they saw us. And then we had petitions started on campuses where tons of students signed this initiative. And also, so I have a seventh grader in band who never was under Mr. Okti, but I wanted to share, last night at the junior high, we had their fall concert, and we have a new assistant band director who started at the junior high. And when she went up to speak last night in the Performing Arts Center, she said, this is my first year here in Kennedale, but I remember being with other schools and seeing them perform, thinking, I really like what Kennedale is doing with their band program. I want to be a part of that. And so that's what, so seeing Kennedale represented at these competitions is what drew a band teacher to come into this program. And she said, it's been so wonderful. So I just was reminded again why this really should be done. So I would love to make a motion to rename the Kennedale Performing Arts Center as the Errol K. Okti Performing Arts Center.
Well, that motion by Ms. Viegómez, very impassioned. And second by...
Have to get it in there before you guys...
And our band did very good again.
And going to state numerous times, I mean, you could just go on and on and on. I just, I'm so proud that we had him in Kennedale.
Second by Ms. Serta?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any discussions before we take a vote?
I don't really think there's anything else that needs to be said. The man was here for a long time, and every year he was here, he, every year when we competed, we excel.
And before we vote, I'd like us to make a point of clarification, okay? So, Mr. Superintendent, you are bringing this to us.
Well, I've brought it numerous times, I've brought it several meetings back. Yes, I would say, I went to his last performance last spring, and just the sheer impact that you saw that he had on the, and the number of people that he's touched and influenced was really, it was very humbling to sit and watch. And I mean, he's had that kind of impact, and yes, I think it's very well deserved.
So the discussion's on the floor, so I'll open it for any other board member that wanted to say anything else.
Oh.
You guys heard it, wow. Okay, so no more discussion. We have a motion, and it's consecutive. And by the way, what is the actual naming going to be on?
Errol K.
Errol K. Okti Performing Arts Center.
Stay consistent with our other buildings.
That's what I was thinking, to be with the rest of the buildings in the district, to have the full name with the middle initial.
Renaming of the current Performing Arts Center to the Errol K. Okti Performing Arts Center. And we can put a branch, K for Kennedale.
Footnote.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it for the renaming of the Performing Arts Center.
Oh, Mr. Okti, thank you, Mr. Okti.
All right, Ms. Mo, we need to get busy on...
Order some letters.
All right, yeah. All right, the eight D, for discussing, consider approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four district and campus improvement plan.
Oh, no.
That's not you.
You want, you want, no, I was saying we need to get busy on ordering letters, so...
We need letters.
All right, Dr. Drew.
Last month, I brought you the district and campus improvement plans. You had an opportunity to hear from me, as well as the principals, ask questions. And so here, I'm here tonight to ask for board approval of the performance objectives for board policy of the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four campus and district improvements.
So we've already had all that great information last week, or last month.
Riveting.
It was, yes, it was riveting, it was riveting. Okay, and I want to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the performance objectives in the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Douglas and second by Mr. Glovier. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and eight E, discuss and consider the approval of Auditor's Building Group for construction management at risk for the additions and renovations to Kennedale High School.
And Mr. Godlaw will take us through this.
In board members, this action item is just one step closer to moving forward improvements at the high school. The agenda item kind of outlines our efforts. We put this out all over the state, we also advertised in the local paper. Had a number of contractors pick up the solicitation off the digital plan room. We had several show up at a group proposal conference where we talked through the projects go. We only had one submit, and that was Author's Building Group. We had great success with them on the Arthur project. And this is right in line with the work that they did at the James A. Arthur campus. And so tonight, we're recommending that you guys consider Author's Building Group as the construction manager at risk for improvements to Kennedale High School.
Questions? No questions? Awesome, then I will entertain a motion at this particular time.
I'll make a motion to approve Author's Building Group for construction manager at risk for the additions and renovations to Kennedale High School, and authorization for the superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute a contract with the firm.
That's a motion by Ms. Cruz Perez and second by Ms. Serta. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. And then eight F, discuss and consider approval of Steele and Freeman for construction management at risk for the additions of the renovations to Kennedale Junior High School.
All right, so we got... Board members, we went through the same process and had good return. We had folks draw the solicitation off the digital plan rooms. We also had several show up for our proposal conference. We actually received three for the junior high. You might ask why three at the junior high, one at the high school? I think frankly, it's a little more sexy, it's a larger addition, got a little more green space to lay out and stage at the junior high than you do at the high school. High school's kind of complicated. But we did get three responses. We got a response from Steele and Freeman, Arthur's Building Group, and Crossland Construction. They put together some really impressive packages. They're all three very qualified firms. We've actually worked with all three of them over the course of our tenure around the state and could recommend any, but the evaluation process included OBR, Reliance Architecture. It also included the administrative staff. After the ranking, Steele and Freeman ranked as the number-one firm, and we're recommending that you consider them as your senior at risk for Kennedale Junior High.
Question there? No questions? Well, then, I'll entertain another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Steele and Freeman for construction manager at risk for the additions and renovations to Kennedale Junior High School, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with the firm.
Motion by Ms. Viegómez.
Second.
And second by Ms. Douglas. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. All right. Discuss and consider E three for district-wide HVAC and LED lighting.
All right, one more time. So as we talked about at the last meeting, we peeled off roofing and the HVAC improvements district-wide as sort of a standalone project. We felt comfortable and confident that design build was the way to go with this. We did a very similar form of seating at risk, we put it out there statewide. We had six firms draw the solicitation off the digital plan room, had calls from several of them expressing interest, even had one that contacted us prior to us posting it out there. We responded to questions, but at the end of the day, we only had one firm submit, that was E three, a very qualified firm. We've had success with them in Kennedale recently, and they have quite a bit of experience across the state doing just this type of work. It will allow us to bring the design team and the construction team under one umbrella, gain some competitive edge around the area regionally from vendors and suppliers and subcontractors. And so we're recommending that you consider E three as your design build firm for HVAC improvements district-wide.
Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve E three integral solutions for district-wide HVAC and LED lighting, and authorization for the superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute a contract with the firm.
Second.
That's a motion by Ms. Viegómez and second by Mr. Glovier. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're at eight H, discuss and consider approval of Southwest Network's proposal for Delaney Elementary PA system.
All right, let's move to Ms. Franklin, Mr. Franklin, sorry.
That's my turn, yeah. Brian is really going to be the one that speaks to this more, but basically what has happened is the PA system at Delaney has died. It's not to be resurrected, and we need to replace it. We did go, we did talk with the current vendor that had put that in, I can't see with my reading glasses on, y'all are all fuzzy, to just replace the core, not all the wiring, all the buttons, all that other fun stuff. And it basically puts us right back to where they were with a twenty-plus-year-old system. Would cost us fifty-three thousand dollars. To completely replace the system like the one we have over at Arthur, it is quite pricey. It's a hundred and forty-three and some change on there, but that's our recommendation. As we're moving forward, we're remodeling and upgrading all of our technology, we recommend that we just completely remove the old system and upgrade to a brand-new system. And that's kind of the long and short of it. If you have any detail-y questions, those are Brian's.
I believe we're also, like, looking at this from safety and security, because the PA system also is...
Two-way speakers.
Blinking in with the system that we may be having to do with panic buttons. And so having a new upgraded system would be beneficial to that.
And integrate to the Raptor, so...
Yeah, there's definitely some benefits. So the existing system, of course, doesn't have the digital, the signage and the two-way speakers to each individual classroom, which this does. That accounts for a good part of the cost difference. Cabling as well is another piece of this. The old system is going to use existing cabling, which is not organized. It's kind of slung across the ceiling grid. The new system, this includes recabling everything to where it meets our standards for documentation, pathways, supportability. I used this just the other day over at Arthur yesterday. There were some issues with some... There were some issues with some cameras upstairs, and I was able to look at our documentation, find out exactly what ports those cameras were plugged into, address them. I didn't have to get up from my seat. It, it's amazing, instead of having to go and plug in a, a device to trace out the connection and then be able to act on it, so... Cabling as well, just in a discussion earlier, we were talking about considering, um, when we do construction projects in the future, you know, if those cabling, if the cabling is, is kind of separate and suspended, this would kind of go, uh, go a long ways in helping us preserve that. So... New features, better cabling, better supportability. And actually, when you, if you do apples-to-apples quotes, because we kinda saw some of this at Arthur as well, that, uh, the existing system winds up, it would cost more to do the same thing, building upon the existing system. Um, another, another thing is, the existing system, we can only use one vendor, whereas the new sys, the system we chose at Arthur, if we decide we don't like the current vendor, or if they don't meet our expectations, there's a handful, we can, we can choose another vendor with it. So, those are, those are some of the reasons why we, we are recommending the, the, uh, the Valcom system.
Questions?
Questions?
Just for my clarification?
Yep.
This is the exact same system that we have at Arthur.
It is the same system we have at Arthur, that's correct.
That's one of our, our goals, is to sit there, like, bring consistent badging all the way across the district, consistent intercom systems, consistent camera systems, all the way across the board. Bring everything up to modern standards, so...
Any additional questions from anyone else?
No.
Alright, I...
I'm moved to approve the contract with Southwest Networks for the installation of a Valcom IP PA system at JF, uh, JF Delaney Elementary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glove and second by Ms. Cruz Perez?
Yes.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your votes. And now, it's time for section nine, which is superintendent's report.
Alright.
Right, the superintendent.
I'll start off with the district enrollment and the updates, you have those in your board, uh, board book. Really, we are down about sixteen students from, uh, last year. At the end of the school year last year, uh, I, like I said, we kinda ebb and flow. We have a lot of, of, of mobility in and out of our district. And we usually hover right around this number, but I say twenty-eight fifty, so every time people ask me, "What's your enrollment?", I say twenty-eight fifty. And I'm, we're, we're usually pretty much right on that, so that's kinda where we're at right now. Um, we do have, um, attendance report. We're hovering pretty close to, as a district, ninety-five percent. Not, still not where we wanna be, but we're getting, getting back to where we were, so that's good there. And then, we've got the, uh, um... Additions, the new housing developments, I guess they're not all new now, there's, some of them been around for a little while, but, uh, you know, as we're looking at it. We have a hundred and eighteen students that have come to us out of those, those, uh, additions. Forty of them are new to, new to the district, and that's kinda where we sit with that report. Any questions there?
What's our goal that we are trying to reach for attendance?
I would say ninety-seven percent.
That's pre-COVID, I think, was ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Ninety-seven?
A hundred percent, if you ask me.
We, we'd love to have a hundred percent, but I don't think we're ever gonna reach a hundred percent. Mr. Cagle?
Ninety-seven, ninety-six at the high school is typically present in the top four top of our comparison group for academic distinction, so, uh, that would be...
I'd say ninety-six to ninety-sevens is kind of our target range, we're trying to get back to.
Okay, thank you.
And we're, like, right underneath it, so...
Okay.
I don't know many districts that have, are reaching their attendance, you know, pre-COVID attendance numbers, so...
Better than once.
Okay, so, construction update. You, you basically just voted on a lot of stuff tonight that basically kinda gives you a big part of the construction update. As we, we have finished finalized, uh, contracts with the, uh, architectural firms. We're now dealing with the, uh, construction managers at risk, which we just hired, approved tonight. We'll be working with the construction contracts with them. And then, we have E three, which will be working with our HVAC and our, uh, lighting. We're also trying to tie that HVAC in with the roofing, so we'll be working in the next board meeting, you're probably gonna be seeing stuff more, roofing, uh, trying to, uh, we've already approved, I believe, Waring, uh, previously. Now, we'll be moving forward after they get the specs done, trying to hire a construction company to do the roofs, and then coordinating all that and getting it gr- rolling hopefully in March. And then, through the summer, having new roofs, new HVAC on, and certain, not all new HVAC, but certain, certain units that need to be replaced at that time, and doing it all at one time, so...
So, with all this rain, it actually kind of had me thinking about our roofs, I did not know exactly when that was...
Today was not a good day. It was not a good day, so... It's, it's, I, you know, Ms. Mode and I had this conversation this morning. It kinda takes me back to when I first came into the district, and I was getting, every time I walked into a building, I was getting blasted, especially Delaney, uh, CSS, uh, Arthur. We got leaks, we got leaks, we got leaks, and, you know, you see buckets, you know, catching the water, and it's like, well, we can't fix the roofs in the middle of the rain, and, you know, but then, the thing is, we were in the middle of a lawsuit at that time. Now, we're kinda, you know, we fixed those, we got that done. The board at that time chose to go ahead and come out of fund balance to get those addressed. Uh, we ended up recouping that with, uh, the lawsuit that we had going on. Uh, there was no recouping for these buildings, you know, so it was all gonna be out of fund balance. Now that we passed the bond, now we're ready, able, you hear that we're moving forward with the destruction. The roofs will be a big, the first priority for the, the projects in addition to the new additions, so, alright.
Again, for my clarification, we're looking at probably March to May for that to happen.
Well, we, we just had a big meeting today about the bond and the projects and the timelines and all that, trying to work through the timelines and how things would all fit together and, and how the, a natural progression to go through it. Uh, so, March is what we're looking at. Hopefully, we can start on some of the outbuildings like the PAC and some of the other stuff before, at, while school's still in play, and then hit the main part of the buildings when school's out, so, so, that's, that's kinda the, the hope, what we're looking for. Uh, it kinda depends on how fast we progress through with, with, with some contract stuff with Waring, so, um, that's where we're at.
So, that, that March deadline, that March date, is that, like, for starting some of the outbuildings or for completion of some of the outbuildings?
Starting.
Starting, okay.
Starting, yes. And then, uh, the concession stand, the, uh, I, I made the joke today, I think I'm gonna get buried underneath the, uh, concession stand because it's, uh, it's, it's been a problem, it's been a headache. We just...
You're talking about the baseball and softball?
Baseball, softball concession stand. Every time we turn around, there's another, another kink in the road, and so, it's been a very arduous task to get through that. We had a construction meeting on that this morning. Uh, I was not in attendance, but I got briefed on it afterwards. The, uh, we found four water lines in this parking lot out here that were not accounted for on any plans. And so, that has really slowed down the progress, and now with the rain that we've had, it's gonna slow it down a little bit more. But, but finding those four water lines, and they didn't, they found them by the hard way to start with, but then, once we knew that there were water lines, then we'd been trying to excavate to find where the rest of them are. None of those were documented from whenever, on, on the ass built from whenever that was built back in nineteen-nineties, or two thousand or something, whatever it was, so... Unfortunately, that's been a, a, a headache for the architects, it's been a headache for the construction company, and we're working through it. And so, we will, uh, we'll get it built, uh, it's just gonna be a tight deadline. So, it may not be a hundred percent completed the way we want it, but, uh, to start with, but we'll get, get there, okay? So, it just, if people are asking, it, we've run into major issues with the, the water lines that were not documented anywhere.
Question that I have for that is, will it be open for the spring season?
It'll be open, it just may not be open at the very, very beginning of it, so, you know, but it will be open, so, yes. It's gonna be nice when it's done, it's just getting to it. Just construction update, any other questions on anything, or... Alright, so, Brian, can you pull up the, uh... There we go. So, uh, that's me with another group, a group of, uh, three other, three, four of us in a group from the superintendent's conference that I'm in, called the Thompson Executive Leadership Institute, wearing my shirt from, from there, you know, so, one of them. That was the other shirt we had, we had to match.
That's not that shirt.
Yeah, we had to, we had to match, and so, but, we took the trip to Puerto Rico, and basically, it was to go down and look at their educational systems and, and what they do. Uh, the trip started with us going to, uh, the very first day, going to, uh, the University of Puerto Rico. Just got me a, a T-shirt, you know, and so, I've got my, uh, fighting rooster, whatever it is on there, so, I've got that.
Bagitos.
Um, I love their colors, the same as Texas Tech, so it was awesome, so, you know, the, uh, but, that was a good experience. And, and there, we sat in a seminar, a, a lecture hall, and we listened to different speakers from the university and from the, uh, uh, education department. And we heard from the Secretary of Education, and basically, just working in conjunction with them, trying, two, two of their superintendents are in the program also, and so, working with them through, through some of these things. After we left that, there, we, uh, the second day, we went to, um, this, we went to a school first, and I'll get to that in here in a minute, but then we went to this conference, which is basically a meeting of, uh, educational leaders, I believe is what that says, uh, so, right?
Yes.
And, uh, this was a big, huge conference that they had. All of their principals come for the day for professional development once a month at this big, huge meeting. And, uh, it was, it was like being at Tassaf mid-winter for us, kinda, but they do it once a month, every month, and it's professional development for the principals. And so, we got to sit in on that, listen to some of their, their, well, they were, most of it was in Spanish, so we didn't understand most of it. We got to eat lunch with them anyway, so, um, it was nice to be around them, and then they took us into some of their PD sessions, and kinda told us what, what they were doing and what they were looking at, a lot of it was with their certification programs. Okay, next slide, Brian. I have no idea, that's just a building, but it, it was a cool picture or something.
I can tell you what it is.
Alright, what is that building?
That is actually, oops.
That's the clock tower for the University of Puerto Rico, if you go back one slide?
Yeah, I think that wall that's, uh, on the front of that, part of the old San Juan...
That is one of the few walls that are left still on the old San Juan part of the island. Um, that was built by the Spaniards back in fifteen-ninety-something, um, and that's one of the last pieces that are left. Um, and that is a convent. Um, and it's actually run by the Carmelite nuns, and, and they take care of sick people there. But you have to put yourself in a waiting list, 'cause it fills up really fast.
I was just working on my artistic ability right there, of taking a really cool picture, so, I thought that was...
Good.
I did, I did take a selfie, though, you know, maybe I did, I just didn't put it in there, so... Alright, so, and this is the tower at, at the University of, of Puerto Rico.
Yes. It's one of the oldest universities in, it's the oldest in Caribbean, and it's one of the oldest in the Americas.
And this is their bell, bell tower, and that's what this is representative of, and so, they gave, it gave me, it gave us all a gift, you know, from the university, so... Uh, the flag was from the education department, so, that was, uh, I brought, brought it with me as well. Uh, Brian, we go to the next, next, this was the first campus we toured, this was a K through eight campus with four-hundred-and-eighty-four students on it. That's the campus. Four-hundred-and-eighty-four students. That's their playground. And, uh, they, uh, they have a covered gym. Open covered gym, so, it's covered, but it's open, you know, it's, I don't know if there's a picture of that in there.
Yeah, I saw.
But, go, go to the next picture. This is their cafeteria.
See the cooler?
The kitchen is basically attached to the eating area, it's all in the, all-in-one, and...
The coolers.
That probably sits thirty-two kids in there possibly, maybe. So, and they feed four-hundred-and-eighty-four kids every day.
And as you can see, they still have their COVID precautions in place.
And they do, yeah, they do sell their screens in place. Alright, next picture. This is the high school that we went to, it's, well, it's a six-through-twelve campus, this was their cafeteria. I will say this, you know, everything's very, very clean. They didn't have ni, the greatest nicest things, they didn't have what we have, but everything was very, very clean. A lot of pride in what they do. Next, uh, next slide.
Food is good.
This was, I believe, a kindergarten classroom, uh, they had school uniforms. Every school has different types of uniforms, but they all have school uniforms. This is where we had our blue shirts on that day, so, uh, but, uh, there's not a whole lot of AC in these, these buildings.
You see fans everywhere.
There's no AC.
We were talking ninety-five degrees, ninety, ninety-five degrees, you know, uh, humidity, heating decks of about a hundred and five. We were all dying, and these kids are in there every day, you know, every day.
They're used to.
And for long periods of time.
We don't have AC probably at home.
Alright, next slide.
Yeah, you don't have AC, you don't have central AC.
This was at the K twelve, I'm sorry, not K twelve, the, uh...
Six twelve.
Six twelve, uh, high school, and that was a performing arts school. In the morning, they do their academics, in the afternoon, they, they work on their, their passion, I guess you might say.
It's a fine art. That kid in the back, you're like...
I'm sorry.
I said, "Look at the kid in the back", he's like, "Hey, everyone else is working". So, by the time they graduate, they end up with... It's always one.
And, uh, you know, you'll see here in a minute how artistic, th- these are probably junior high kids here. So, they had different shirts at this, I mean, they had maroon, they had yellow, they had, uh, they had all the different kinds, kinda designating the grade level of the students. So, these students are all the same grade level, um, but this is probably junior high, and then, next slide. That's also a junior high student, I wish you could blow that up, and you could see the detail that is in that. It is phenomenal, you know, it was so impressive to watch, and some, just such artistic kids, and this is their studio, basically, you know, just, just, just a room. Next, uh, slide. This is their bathrooms and their offices. As you can see, a lot of TLC. You know, I, I took a lot of pictures of facilities because that really stuck, struck me, and, 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 I'll, I'll talk about that later, but, you know, it really struck a chord with me. Next, next, uh, slide. This is the gym. This is what they have for a gym, so it's outdoor, open. If you notice, this is also where they, they were doing, they had made these little, uh, Land Rover, uh, cars and stuff, it was their science week, it was space week, and they'd made these Land Rover little things, and they were basically pushing them down this, uh, incline thing here, and this is outdoor, to see whose car would go the furthest, and, you know, uh, Land Rover would be, I'd say. Alright, next slide. This was the high school, this is their PAC. This is their Errol K. Oaktie PAC.
The K is for Puerto Rico.
Yeah. It's all outdoors. Uh, it's really, really hot, um, and these kids are costumes there, and, uh, you'll, I don't know if I had any of them, but they're dancing, I think you'll see those at the end. But you wouldn't know that they, they don't know what they don't know. And they don't know what they don't have.
That's all they know.
And it's sad, and the reality is, it was really humbling for me, and it was really hard for me, because I got really disenchanted, because you see what they do with so little, and how they make it work, and how they have so much pride in what they do. And then, we come back to America, and nothing is never good enough.
Oh, I, so you guys saw those fans in those classrooms, they're not provided by the Department of Education, those are paid by the teachers. The teachers in Puerto Rico, most of the time, will spend their summer painting their own classrooms, 'cause there is usually not enough, just like, we don't get enough money from the state. They don't either.
It's very, it's very comparative, you know?
And our teachers back home, they make way less than what our teachers here make. And the cost of living is much more expensive when you have to spend seven dollars for a gallon of milk.
So, it was very, very humbling, and like I said, it made me, it made me feel very disenchanted with, with our educational system. Next, next slide. This is kids, the, uh, they made these costumes themselves.
So, Vicky, don't this.
Yeah. Next slide.
That's it?
And that was it. So, I mean, I didn't put every, I, I had about a hundred pictures, there's no way I can put it all in there, but it was, it was, it was a very impactful trip, you know? It made me realize that you can always do more with less, you know, and, and that was kind of, I think, the point of the trip was, look what they do with so little, what could we do with what we have? And, you know, I think we need to always look at the opportunities that we, we are given, and appreciate them, but then also realize that, yes, things can always be better, but we have things so much better than other people. And our educational system, you know, is it perfect? No, but we have so many opportunities, and we just need to sit there and make the most of it, so, alright.
Alright.
Reach on. Alright.
Thank you, but, uh, it's now to nine D, let's do the legislative update.
Alright. Vouchers, 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 so, I mean, I think you've all, I think I've entered any of our district, I've entered, you're part of the KISD hall. Vouchers, 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 so, I mean, I think you've all, I think I've been and done either our district, I've been, you're part of the K I S, y'all. We just need to keep ta- talking to our House of Representatives, and keep sending stuff to them, and hope they can hold out, you know? The, the reality is, if vouchers pass in any form, it's not, there's no way that is good for public education. And, you know, they say, oh, it's only five hundred million, and it's, you know, well, that's five hundred million for a, such a small, I think it's seven hundred thousand students, when there are five-point-two million Texas students in public education, and they're holding five billion dollars, five-point-two billion dollars away from us, so they can get five hundred million to seven hundred thousand students, you know, how is that right? And, you know, last time I checked our constitution, I think some of you see the art, saw the article where I was very outspoken in the article.
Yeah.
But the reality is, our, last time I checked our constitution, it doesn't say one thing about private education and our government funding it. It says, public education, a free public education, and to take that money away from public schools and hold it ransom, so that you get vouchers passed for seven hundred thousand students, it's ridiculous, and so.
I think what I find so frustrating about this is, when we were there, when we were in Austin in February, they were talking about eighteen billion dollars. And then the week that it was, the, the, oh, the regular session was supposed to expire, suddenly we're down to five billion, and now we have zero. I, honestly, I don't know how they sleep at night.
For less than ten percent of the students in Texas, yeah.
That, all of that.
So why? Because rich, wealthy people have put money into their pockets for campaign contributions. And I say it, and I said it out here in this meeting, a public meeting, and I'll say it, I said it in a news article, I'll continue to say it. It's not right by the majority of Texans, and so I'll leave it at that. As far as anything else, when we're going to get our, our scores, that's still up in, in a debate. Ever since the school districts all jumped on and started suing, T E A has backtracked immensely, and, you know, there's talk that A through F may be dead. If, if it gets caught up in this legislation, it may not come back for a while, and if it doesn't, there's, there are legislators who are pushing to get rid of it. So, anyway, that might be good for everybody.
We'll wait and see. Fuzzy math never, never solves many problems.
All right, that is my update.
Okay, well, thank you, superintendent G, we'll now go to section ten for the board discussions, first thing is upcoming meeting dates and times. Okay, I do know, uh, remember, if I'm not mistaken, that last month, we talked about dates for our next meeting? A date for our next, uh, board meeting, that is, in November, and I believe it came with November sixteenth.
That's what I have too, or.
That's what I have from the video.
Yes.
All right, I think we, we, we need to take a look at the possibility of having a special meeting before then.
Okay.
Might be some information that will come down that we might want to go and share.
Okay.
Uh, and discuss, uh, like I would operate procedures, so let's see if we can, uh, do one before our next meeting, and understand if there might be some people that may not be able to attend, okay?
We're going to keep it to a Thursday?
Well, I think any date is open.
I think if we're going to have, if we're going to have it, next week is the first week of November, so if we're going to have a special meeting, it probably needs to be the second week, and.
That would be Thursday.
If we're going to do that, it's going to have to be in the, uh, like Tuesday, because I'll be gone on Thursday, Friday.
November seventh, Tuesday the seventh.
Selection day.
Our selection day.
That's fine, we don't vote at six o'clock. Oh, wait, voting polls are open at that time.
What about Wednesday? Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday?
How about Wednesday, the eighth?
I can do any of those, I don't care.
Well, I know Ms. Mood's not going to be available on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So granted, she's not here, and she can't come, she can't come. Monday can work, I think.
Wednesday works.
Maybe that Monday, then?
Yeah.
Monday?
The sixth, it'll kick off a week like that?
I say why not?
Let's do it.
Monday the sixth?
November the sixth, six o'clock? Six o'clock? Six o'clock.
There's no school that day, though, so.
There's no school that day?
There's no school that day, so do you want people to have to come in?
It's a special meeting, I don't think we.
It wouldn't need everybody.
It wouldn't be recorded or anything?
I think it's more right.
I just want to make sure if you have to get Brian or anyone.
Oh, no, we don't have to record it, so.
This is day off.
I don't think we've recorded these special meetings, what we have to.
No, we don't have to record the special.
Oh, okay, it's the staff development, so people will be here, but students won't be here.
Students will not be here.
Just looking out for Mr. Franklin.
Okay, so the sixth.
All right, so we are set for a special meeting November sixth at six P M, and regular meeting November sixteenth at six P M.
That is correct. Everybody's okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sirdam, does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm done.
Oh, okay.
This week was my last.
All right, that went quicker and faster than I thought it was going to.
And then December fourteenth for the next regular meeting after.
I don't know, we have school that day.
That's from the last meeting.
I believe we all talked about that.
That's Thursday the sixteenth, I believe.
The sixteenth of December would be a Saturday.
December?
Just recapping, December was December fourteen.
Yeah, we did have that, we were going to discuss that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Fourteen?
Yes.
Fourteen, thirteen, okay.
Thursday the fourteenth.
All right, let me change it to that twenty-first.
No, I think that's what it normally would have been, but because of the holidays.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, good, I'm, I'm locked in.
All right. Good deal.
Okay, all right, great, all right, uh, we now move to section eleven, resignations and retirements.
All right, instead of reading through all that, you can read it for yourselves, if there's any questions there, we do have some, a couple of things to go into closed session on, personnel. If you have any questions, anything else, ask them now, or we can wait until a closed session.
I think we'll be to go and wait till a closed session for that? Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, great, all right. So then why don't we take a five-minute recess, let everybody have a chance to, you know, move out, and come back? So we're going to, uh, adjourn at seven-twenty, take a bathroom break, and we'll reconvene at seven-twenty-five-ish. All right, we now return from break at seven-thirty-six, and we will now enter to closed session, also at seven-thirty-six. Okay, returning from closed session at eight-thirty P M, we will now, uh, pick up where we left off, and I think we are, there would be no action on item thirteen A. And item thirteen B, considering proposal action regarding contract abandonment and seeking sanctions for abandonment of contract.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to request sanctions on the teacher certification of Carolyn Neal, finding that good cause that not supporting employees' abandonment of contract.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cruz Perez, and second by Mr. Globier, uh, are ready for a vote on this. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, and then that brings us to item number fourteen.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Glob.
I'd like to move that we adjourn this meeting and get up out of here.
And so moved. We're all there.